Tom sent out the minutes from the August meeting. Trustees, if you didn't already take a look, please do so now.
I made the changes as suggested by Chuck Whitney and Francis.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, this was not too complicated. Great.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Please.
They're submitted. I got a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one opposed, good, so the minutes have been approved. Thank you. All right. WLS report, Francis.
Yeah. Hi Cory.
Hi.
How wonderful summer recess unfortunately is coming to an end, so the board will have its first meeting by the end of this month. Meanwhile, the Strategy Committee which I'm chairing and is looking into the future of WLS and whatever changes should be made, we will meet on Monday. So I think next time we're on quite a bit to report.
Wonderful, good, okay. Thank you. Welcome back, everybody. President's report, I don't have too too much to talk about except for the obvious pressing survey and strategic planning process that we're currently in the midst of. As everybody knows, the survey close date is October 2nd. We have our community meeting on September 29th, 7 to 8:30. At the moment, we believe it will be held here in this theater. If that changes, we will alert everybody through our various channels. And it will be in a similar format to the last meeting, which was pretty well attended and we got some great feedback. I think as of yesterday, we had 807 surveys completed. We have a goal of 2,000, so we're almost halfway. Please, please continue to push out through your networks. And we've had, you know, a lot of pushing from our staff here, from Tom's staff, has been wonderful, Lisa in particular has been really, really excellent. The response rates have not, don't really reflect despite pushing in all the right places, but, you know, don't necessarily reflect the demographics of New Rochelle, but we're getting there. So, you know, any and all hands on deck? Anyone have any thoughts or comments?
Yeah, maybe just a suggestion, and Lisa may have already tried this, I'm not sure, but like, have we tried reaching out to like the, what are the emails that I get every day, like the, it used to be the Patch, but it's not the Patch anymore, it's like the Daily something or other New Rochelle, it's like the, like very local, because I remember, because one of the guys wrote a story when we were having our, the developer issues. And so I, I'm wondering if she might try reaching out to the, one of those local reporters and say like, you know, basically like just give them the background, we're trying to do a strategic plan, would you be willing to like write a little piece? We can give you like kind of an update on how we, what's happening, you know, with the library, you know, maybe she can try to think of an interesting hook for him or something, but, but that might be helpful, because I assume that a lot of people get those emails.
Both of those, the Patch and the Daily, the New Rochelle's of you.
Voice?
It comes back every day.
Daily Voice, yeah.
I have low highs.
Because I feel like they're, I feel like, I feel like they're kind of always like looking for stuff, because, you know.
Yeah, I know Lisa has a Prisket that she utilizes.
Yeah, so she may already have attempted, but.
You know, she may very well have, but I'm more than happy to touch base with her. I will say that.
I think the guy's name was like Zach Fallia, I think he's the reporter that writes a lot of the local stuff.
Michael Wojcik, I believe, was the Patch reporter, and I should probably.
Yes, yes, please.
And I will, I will ask Lisa to.
And I'm happy, I'm happy, I'm happy to talk to her if she wants to.
No, no, good idea. Lucille?
So just building on Chuck's idea, can you, does this, do you have to, do I have to bring it closer? Two other suggestions, one is WVOX, if we haven't.
Yes.
That would be something worth going on for the radio show.
Yeah, we were on, we were, we did a show and did talk about the survey.
How, how recently?
I think it was the beginning of August, right when we were just getting started.
So maybe, maybe it's worth going again, because it's multiple touch, let me just finish, it's multiple touch points to, to do that. The other is that you've got neighborhood groups and neighborhood associations, and it's worth getting on their calendars sooner, so that you repeat the message again to, for us to, and I think, especially in the North End, I don't know if there are, but that's another thing to, if Lisa could do, to find out who those groups are, and then if there are any meetings, we can get on their calendars.
That's great, so it's, it's good, because we do go around to all the neighborhood associations during budget time, so we have all those people, we know who they are, and we can actually like probably get blasted through the Narcona, the New Rochelle Council of Neighborhood Associations, who can blast everybody.
I have a lot of the emails, so I could always just send the link and ask if they send it out, if you want me to.
The answer to everybody is yes, and it doesn't matter if someone else is doing it or has done it, because the more you see it, the more you'll pay attention to it, and if it comes from multiple sources of people you know and trust and have heard of and whatever, then you're more likely to actually click on it and take the survey. So, yes, so we'll, we'll be following up and pushing that out. It's really important that we get as many voices as we possibly can. And I think that's.
There was a request in New Rochelle Council of Community Services due to the lack of technology, if the library representative can come to sites to give out surveys, so for example, to improve pantry distributions at Hope Community Services, 95 Link Game, United Community Center of Westchester on North Avenue, to have a table there, and, you know, we know, we know that there are resources that many other clients use for the use of Denise and other new child programs here, so, but access to technology is always a danger, so they want to know if there's a possibility that some representatives can be there as they move the survey.
I, I know Denise has gone to a few Hope events, and Lisa and Denise have gone to the summer concerts in Hudson Park, where we have been really trying to find ways to connect with the community, and any suggestions, Daniel, that people from the council have relative to events, you would send them to Denise or myself or both of us, Lisa too, we'd all welcome that. And we, we really have been working hard. Lisa, I have to really give kudos to Lisa Itzkowitz, because she has sort of landed in the job and, and taken off of it, and has really worked very hard to provide access to the community for surveys. I've been reaching out, I've been focusing on our African-American community, because we've had a far smaller response relative to the percentages in the community than we thought. And I made a good contact with the Executive Director of the New Rochelle Municipal Housing Authority, Angela Farish, she was terrific. We worked with Tim McKnight at an upcoming event that was postponed last Saturday because of weather conditions. We will be distributing surveys to the backpack giveaway through Representative Jamal Bowman, and she and Tim are working on trying to connect with people in the housing authority. I've worked with Omar Smalls, and we are in touch with lots of people in the African-American community to try to make certain that we are able to access the opinions of that population. So we're trying hard, but everybody participating and putting it out to their friends and acquaintances, professional, you know, people that are in the community, we would truly welcome it, because we've got about a month to go, and it's, we would like to have a higher percentage of responses, so that we can feel that we're representing the community.
Do we have a booth at the Street Fair?
Yeah, yeah, we, New Rochelle, since the onset of the Street Fair, we've been participating, and I know Community Relations will be there, I'll be there, as well as the Rotary Booth, and we have surveys there too as well.
What's the date and the time for everybody?
19?
19, 19, Sunday.
Sunday, what, what, does it start at 10? I'm trying to.
12 to 5 or something?
I suppose so, yeah, because we have a, we have a step forward.
And is anyone at the Greek Festival, which started today?
Oh, I don't know.
And goes into this weekend and gets a lot of attendees.
Is that, is that in the North End or where is it?
Yes, it's the northern end of North Avenue, on the west side of the street.
Mill Road and.
Yeah, yes, exactly, that corner.
I can ask about that.
Great. Keep it coming, everybody. Keep pushing and thank you. And I think you're going to talk about the other, the other question about the, I don't need to bring up the extra sick days, you're going to talk.
The what?
The additional sick days for.
Oh, yes, I have that, I have that under the personnel report.
Perfect, okay, good, so that's it for me, and we'll pass it on to Tom for Director's Report.
Okay, thank you all. Just wanted to provide some updates first about our grant situation. As you folks know, we met in August and approved two grants that would go to the, to the Westchester Library System for consideration by the Ad Hoc Committee appointed to look at the grant applications. These folks are library directors in the county who do not have a stake in, in the grant application process for any particular year. And then once those recommendations are made, they go to the WLS staff to look at the grants and sort of answer questions and fill in holes that, that the grants may have generated. And then finally, ultimately, will go to the WLS Executive Board, with Francis there, for their approval. Once that approval is obtained, we will then go on to the state of New York and goes through the Dormitory Authority, the New York State Library, et cetera, et cetera. And then we hope to see the, the grant awards, if we are lucky enough to get a grant award, awards sometime in September or October of the following year. So for the Huguenot Children's Library Air Conditioning Project, where we're planning to, to install new slimline ductless systems on all three levels, the systems that were there have been in existence since 1998, they're starting to fail. The total cost of the, of the project is $23,000 and change. Our grant application is for, for $17,800, and so we're hopeful about that. The larger the two grants, of course, is the continuation of a renovation of the interior of the main library, and this time we're looking at the third floor. It's a significant upgrade, and the total cost of the project ended up being $456,000. The, the grant that we're seeking to obtain, again, a big number, $332,000. The, the gap, we are hoping that the foundation will assist us, maybe some fund balance monies as well. Again, the timeframe should be, we should know in the fairly near future. I know Elise Burke has been in touch with, with Gene Manning about some various questions, and so I, you should know, and I'll be up to report in October. Meanwhile, in terms of our other grants, Gene has been very busy closing out these grants, two grants at the Huguenot Children's Library from previous years, and two grants here. And it's, it's a, it's, it's a tedious process with a lot of, a lot of red tape, paperwork, questions back and forth, but we're looking forward to closing them out in the near future, so we're excited about that. Other things that are going on, as you folks are well aware, unfortunately, New Rochelle High School was closed due to Ida, and it will be out of commission through the end of October, possibly into early November. And I have been in touch with the superintendent, who was wondering whether or not the library could assist, we absolutely said we would welcome that opportunity. There was some conversation, there was a basic conversation about the possibility of allowing the theater to be used by our PAVE students, perhaps other students. We said we'd be more than willing to work with, with the school district. When I spoke to the superintendent on Sunday, he had a lot on his plate, as you can imagine, and he indicated that he would share our interest in cooperating with the team that's trying to figure out where to sort of put things together, so that the high school can function to some degree until they reopen. And so meanwhile, we're waiting to hear, but we're ready to assist, either in, with the theater or in other ways, because obviously, it's just been a really tough year for children and education, and to have this happen on top of everything else just seems pretty dreadful. So, so we're working towards that. Another service that we're hoping to provide next year, a very popular one, is our AARP Tax Assistance Program, that's run by this amazing group of volunteers, senior volunteers, who give their time typically anywhere from mid-January until tax deadline in mid-April, here in the library, two days a week, usually eight hours each day. The previous year, as you know, COVID really set them back, and they only did a, a distance sort of tax assistance, and so their numbers were far less than in, in previous years. I had a conversation with the, with the lead volunteer, Tim Oberg, great, great guy who's been coming here year after year, along with his colleagues, and they are again hoping to be able to have a physical presence in the building next year, they just don't know. So we're open to working with them to try to find a way to, again, help so many of our residents that, that depend upon this assistance. And, you know, the numbers are pretty amazing, typically over 1,200 people are served over the course of a short period of time. So we're, we're willing to work with them in some way, shape, or form, and again, we're just, he's not sure, AARP is not certain yet, because of what's still going on. Let's see what else is happening. I just want to report just some activity levels this summer in terms of our, our programming and our summer reading, and I have the stats right here. And of course, like you've heard elsewhere, our activity levels were nothing like they were prior to the onset of COVID. But having said that, we did enjoy a busy, reasonably robust program, both in terms of our summer reading program and also our summer programs, and I'll just throw some numbers at you for your consideration. The, the total in-person summer program attendance at both buildings was 2,986, which is a good number. Maine was 1,549, and Huguenot Children's Library was really just close behind, 1,437 people participated in our programs at HCL. Virtual programs, we continue to do virtual programs for people not comfortable or are not able to, to venture out, was 458, which means between in-person and virtual, we had 3,444 attendees. So that was reasonably good, again, nothing, nothing like our programs in the past, but we had a presence, they were popular. Most of our in-house programming was in the tent here in the Children's Garden, which was a big success, thanking the foundation for providing with us with the funds to, to rent the tent and as well as purchase furniture for, for the programs. At the Huguenot Children's Library, of course, we have a long tradition of having programs outside on the back patio, that continued, and again, was a, was a, was a good success. In terms of our summer reading program, we reverted to a program that was made available to all New York State residents libraries. It's a Read Square program, and we had nearly 400 children participate, which again is really pretty good. Again, maybe about half of what we had in previous years, but still a very respectable number. So that was that, just, let me just give you a little, a little information about the teen programs, and it's right here. And again, you know, our teen programming, I don't think reflects in a lot of ways how active our teen room has been since we reopened. It's maybe the busiest spot in the library, believe it or not, and it's because we have really good staff there with Rio and Luis, and the space has been renovated, it looks great. I don't know if you've seen it, but it's a really kind of a fun, interesting spot. And so we see lots of kids there, every day, we hear them too. But in terms of programs, we had 40 sessions and we had 141 attendees, which is, which is good for our, for our teen population, so we're, we're happy with that. And among our most popular programs, Painting with Bob Ross, Video Game Night, Movie Night, and a video game tournament, so, so that's good. So just to give you a sense that, even though our library has been very quiet, and it has been quiet, and that's what I'm hearing from our peer libraries throughout the county, that we have not yet returned to those activity levels that we saw prior to the pandemic, but, but there are people using the library in different ways, using their, our eBooks, which the usage have skyrocketed from year to year, I believe it's over 80% increase prior to COVID to now. We've been purchasing more and people are, you know, you know, accessing the eBooks and the e-audio books, and our streaming services too, and the New York Times. So usage is there, it's just different, which is understandable. Let's see what else. I just want to remind people that we have some very exciting programs coming up here as sponsored by our foundation. Our foundation has been a real bellwether for us in terms of being able to move forward with improving the library in terms of its physical plant, programs, advocacy, we're very fortunate to have them and the Friends. The, the, the foundation is having the citywide scavenger hunt, the Scavaganza, on the first Saturday in October, I think that's the second. And I'm, I'm hoping that you folks can participate or at least provide sponsorship. And so, Chris Sellen was at last night's Rotary Meeting, Francis is the Rotary President this year, and she said that she had 25, she had 25 teams that will be going throughout the city using an app to, to, to find clues and solve. And the other element is that they're fun, but there's also the hope that people that do participate receive sponsors who can, you know, you know, provide, could be 10, 15, 20, 30, $50 more towards their efforts in the scavenger hunt. And Chris indicated that she and her team have had great success finding sponsorships, you know, I think over $30,000, which is a real, it's a significant number in this, in our COVID times. And so I would encourage everyone in the audience and people out there in the ether to consider participating, it'll be fun, and it will be a, a good cause. You know, at, at the end of that event, which is only two hours from 4:00 to 6:00, there'll be sort of an after event, and then we're hoping that people will then disperse to patronize our local restaurants, you know, which truly could use, you know, that infusion. And then the following day, another exciting day, is the Family Fair, which will have a theme of sort of superpowers, you know, reading, your library card is a superpower making you stronger. And so we're expecting to have programs for children and teens and adults throughout the Sunday 1 to 5 hour. And at 3 o'clock, there'll be the additional bonus of a ribbon cutting on our renovated second floor. However, because of COVID, not all the pieces are there, but we do, we will have renderings, pictures, you know, so that's something.
When is that again?
The 3rd of October, Sunday from 1 to 5. And at that ribbon cutting, we've already heard from some of our terrific state legislative delegates who will be there in person, are sending a representative from Senator Stuart Cousins' office, Senator Meyer, Representative Otis, Representative Paulin, so we have, we have good attendance, I believe the mayor is coming. I'm hoping some members of the board will be able to come and participate in that great event. And last but not least, our Friends are open, they're selling books at a really hot pace, they've gotten a lot of donations, because COVID time, people bought books, and when they're done, they decided to give them to the Friends, so they have lots, lots of fairly new popular fiction and nonfiction, and, you know, they're taking limited donations, and that's it.
Excellent. So.
The library staffs is quite impressive, I mean, given the difficulties of the time. Just to educate me a little bit, how do you get the staffs? How do you collect the?
The stats for the summer reading game through the, through the app is pretty easy. The software allows us to, to very definitively do that. In terms of the programs, it's the old fashioned headcount.
Okay.
Yeah, and all of that, but that's, that's, and everybody's hyper aware that we really want to make certain we get a good count of activity levels, because it's indicative of, you know, that we're, that we're making every effort in a really difficult time.
Great, thank you, Tom.
Cory?
I want to get some clarity around the grant, $330,000, and you're saying renovation of 34, 456? Which grant?
That's the main, main library, third floor renovation grant. And so, we haven't heard yet, but, you know, this year, there's, the money has doubled, so instead of a 650,000 Westchester pot, we're looking at a doubling, I think it's over 1.3 million, and hopefully we'll hit it. We did with the circulation desk, we got the entire amount, almost $300,000 to, to do that renovation, and then the, the foundation provided the 25% match, you know, so it's a good formula, we're hoping our luck continues.
Tom, I just wanted to add an update. Public Works Partners had submitted an application to participate on the panel as a presenter for the 2021 Hindsight Conference. It's called Redefining the Anchor Institution, and a number of participants were included in this proposal, including New Rochelle Public Library. So let me just pull up the quick description. It's called Redefining the Anchor Institution. What are cultural institutions and what role should they play in their communities? Is the kind of leading question. In order to remain relevant and embedded in the fabric of their communities as vital assets and resources, cultural institutions must take bold steps toward define, Chuck said bold, didn't he? Toward defining new missions, visions, and values. From libraries to public parks, this session will explore how cultural institutions can promote health equity, advance community wealth building, and create more inclusive spaces that strengthen the community. This engaging conversation will cover best practices for everything from data collection to community engagement, common missteps to avoid, and leave attendees energized to begin facilitating these conversations within their own organizations. So in addition to the Queens Public Library, the High Line, and Public Works Partners, we will be participating on this panel, so we'll be prepared and we'll do our best to represent.
It'll be Whitney.
It'll be us.
Yes.
And when is that?
It is November 5th, 2 to 3 PM, and it's virtual, so once we get more information, we will share it widely. It's very exciting. Those are great institutions. I work very closely with the Queens Public Library in Jamaica, and I love that library too.
And it was, I think it was a real compliment that we were asked to participate, and my sense of what PWP indicated was they, they thought our first community meeting was a big success, that it was, it just was very positive, and, and they thought that Whitney and the board and the staff represented themselves very well, and they thought that we had something to contribute, and I think we do, and I think Whitney will do a great job.
Thank you, thanks, Tom, I'm excited, for all of us. Wonderful. Okay, current operational status, personnel report?
Personnel report, I've got a few things to talk about, and I will be needing some resolutions. We have two employees who have left our employment, one for summer, one for a better job, and I'm going to read off their names, their, their titles, and their salaries, once they, you know, their final salaries, and I'll ask for a board resolution to. And I'll ask for a board resolution to accept their resignation. First, Chiron Fitzgerald. He is a library clerk, part-time. His final salary was $23.65. His final day was August 28th. The other staff member who is resigning is Makella Rogers. She is a page. She worked at the Huguenot Children's Library. Her final salary was $13, and her final day of employment was August 8th. Could I have a motion to approve their resignation?
I have a motion to approve their resignation.
A second?
Yep, go ahead. Go ahead.
Lucille?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Nope? Okay, so.
First step down. Next one, and this is something that we had talked about earlier. We have an employee who is retiring. Her name is Mary Thompson. She was a librarian too. She worked in the children's department. She was full-time. And her final salary, her annual salary upon her retirement, was $79,731. And her final day of employment was August 31st of this year. Could I have a motion to accept her retirement?
I can make a motion to accept her retirement. Can I get a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great. So thanks to Mary Thompson for her service.
For her many years of fine service. Wish Mary the best.
Sure do.
This was something that I had discussed with the board through, with the Personnel Committee, and I met with their approval. We have an employee. Her ID number is 8LH000226. And this employee has made the request for additional sick time. She has had a health problem, undergoing a medical procedure, and she needed time. And so spoke with the Personnel Committee, and they approved the recommendation to give her, to give this employee up to 20 additional days sick time if she needs it in terms of this illness. And this, of course, is appropriate vis-à-vis the contract that is in place and has been awarded to employees in a similar situation in previous years. The caveat is that for any employee that is given that time, they must, they absolutely must use all of their earned time, whether it be vacation time, comp time, personal time, you know, floating holidays, et cetera. And so with that in place, right.
Before they can access.
Before they can access this additional time. So could I have a motion to approve what I just indicated?
Yeah, I can make a motion to approve the additional sick time for the employee number that Tom just stated.
You didn't remember?
I can read it if you want me to. It's right there.
There it is.
Yep, 8LH000226. This is the employee ID number. So can we, I can make a motion to approve that additional sick time. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so.
Beth seconded. Thank you all very much for all of that. And I'm just going to give you an update regarding our recruitments, which, as you know, are many. The good news is that we began interviewing on Wednesday, yesterday, and for our Librarian One position. And we had really an excellent field of really good candidates. They all did very well. And we're going to caucus and decide who we want to come back for second interviews. But it was very successful, I'm happy to say. The recruitment for the Librarian Two positions will take place this Monday. Like yesterday, it will be Zoom only for the candidates that we think meet our criteria. And again, it looks like a really strong group of candidates, so we're very excited about that. And once we finish that round of Zoom interviews, we will ask the candidates to come back. And as Whitney and I have discussed, I would very much like board participation for these second interviews. They're important positions. They're supervisory positions, and we appreciate your input. And so I'll circle back to you when we get to that point in time. Let's see what else. Some of the part-time positions I'm not personally involved in, but our staff is going to be interviewing. And then they may have selections. And I've asked just to have the opportunity to meet with who they would like to hire. I believe that those interviews have begun and are continuing. There are a few positions that are outstanding. One is the Library Assistant, the full-time position, in which our initial recruitment was, came back with a very sort of thin group of candidates. There were one or two that we thought had possibilities. But we thought we had to reopen it to make sure that we had as robust a candidate pool as possible. And so that position, the second posting has closed, and we're waiting to hear from Civil Service about that. And the position that's probably of most interest is the Assistant Director position. And as we had said, the first go-around, we had a few candidates that had, that looked good, but we really felt that we needed a bigger pool because it's such an important position. We wanted to be able to feel comfortable that we had the best possible, you know, response. And so we reposted that. And one of the things that both myself and our staff did was to continue with the goal of trying to recruit a diverse and multicultural workforce. So we, the Civil Service Department only posts essentially locally, but we reached out to the Black Caucus ALA group, so that position was posted there, with Reforma, which is a Spanish-speaking network of Spanish service librarians, also an Asian Pacific group as well. We reached out in the county, both through our, the Directors List Serve and through the Westchester Library System Job Service, and also through Metro, which is Metro New York positions as well, and also through the New York Library Association Job Line and kind of List Serve as well. So we are throwing the net as wide as possible so that we can get the best, most competitive group of candidates for this really important position. That position has not closed yet. That is closing on the 20th. So we're anxious to see, you know, what our results are. And I will certainly keep you posted. And you folks will be very involved in the selection of who that person will be. And Whitney and I had talked about it, and she had requested that, like the other positions, we put together a pool of candidates. I might ask you to take a look at resumes. We'll do the first interview Zoom, and the board can participate if they want. But we feel on the second and possibly third interviews, we really think that board involvement will really make it, will strengthen the whole analysis process. And, let's see, we have one position that was posted, and we're waiting for results. And that is the Librarian One Archivist. It's a part-time position. The person that previously held the job, had a full-time job, which was great. So we're out looking, and so we're waiting to hear from Civil Service about that. And the other position that we approved so many months ago, that we finally have gotten to Civil Service after a lot of fits and starts, the programmer position is now in the hands of the Civil Service Commission. They meet on the 21st of September. And we're hoping that they will approve it or make some changes as they see fit and allow us to move forward and recruit on that position, which is a really important position too, and one that I'd like some board involvement, you know, as much as possible. And that's it. A lot to say, but I'm done.
No, that's great. Thank you, Tom. Yep. Just to reiterate, I think it's really important that the staff identifies people who gel well with, you know, they get their gut instincts there, and then they present to the rest of us. You know, you folks have to work together every day. And your opinion and feeling and sensibility of, you know, these applicants is kind of tantamount to the whole process, and we are here to support you and just give our, you know, our guidance. But we're going to look to you to...
Every candidate that comes back on a second interview will meet the staff. It won't be sit in a room and...
Yeah.
It's an opportunity for our staff to evaluate the person and vice versa.
Yep, that's phenomenal. Great. Thank you. Okay. Committee report. So Budget Committee. We don't have anything. It's too early in the process, so there's no Budget Committee report. Buildings and Grounds. Sarah's not here. Did she report out? Is there anything? I don't think there is anything at the moment, right? Nope. Community Relations.
Nothing to report at the moment.
Nothing to report at the moment. Well, we have a lot of stuff going on for places where the library will be, but we've already talked about them. So more to come. Finance Committee?
We sent the court of duty with Gina and Tom to meet about the banks.
The banks, okay. Still in progress.
Well, it's time to go on your schedule.
Oh, I emailed Gina and said I was available.
Okay, tomorrow.
Yep. Well, not, well, I wasn't available tomorrow. I emailed you that I was available Tuesday. You didn't get that email.
I didn't get it, but that's all right.
Yep. Well, let's look at schedules maybe before you leave. And Gina's here too, and we could all, you know.
Okay. Okay.
That's it.
Good. Personnel Committee?
We are still in the information gathering stage for the contract negotiations. Soon we will have something more to report at the October.
That was a feverish meeting I walked in on earlier. I looked very, very, and very intense. Yep. Policy Committee likewise. We are, I think the only outstanding policy that we were looking at was related to that auditing, that First Amendment auditing issue. Am I even on that committee anymore?
I'm the chair of that.
You're the chair of that committee. Okay. So yeah, so that's a, that's a topic that we should address. It's not on fire, but it's something that could, it's like a tornado. Like if you're in the path, you're in the path. So you want to be prepared and get in your basement, right? Just use a metaphor. We want to be, right?
A familiar one.
Right? We want to be, we want to have a response and know what to do in the event that befalls us, right? And we hope that it never does.
I'm anxious to see how you go about that because you're facing a similar thing.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'd be following that.
Yeah. So thanks, Frances. Yep. And if anyone has questions about it, we can, I'm happy to remind folks what that is. And we have the, we were given some kind of documentation on it and just to kind of look at best practices.
We have not heard from our attorney. I should remind him.
Yes, please. Special Projects. We are, you know, we have our kind of ad hoc strategic planning committee that is just, you know, we meet every other week with Public Works Partners. We go over the stats for the latest on survey respondents and demographics and what people are saying for the most part. And it's helpful. And the only other comment I can make about, that's kind of related to special projects, is I got a, Lucille and I actually got a little message from a friend who was in the Berkshires at the, I believe is at the Norman Rockwell Museum, with their children standing next to our painting. And it was nice to see it, when they were so happy to see the plaque that had, you know, that it's all loaned from the New Rochelle Public Library. So it was cute, and I appreciated seeing our beautiful painting out in the world. I already provided an update on the strategic plan process. Any other comments related to that?
Do you want to mention the next community meeting?
Yes. So I will mention it again. It's September 29th is the date that we will have our second community meeting that will be in-person. It will also be via Zoom at the same time, like we did previously. But it will give people a chance. And we're still in a, there's a window right now in the next, you know, week or so where we could change the venue if it makes sense to go to people who may not be able to make it here. The problem with that is then we can't include people via Zoom because the capability for doing that is limited outside of this venue to our knowledge. But if that's not the case, we are, you know, very open to hosting a community meeting in another location that could, you know, accommodate as many people as possible.
I just want to confirm it's September, because I thought you said October 29th.
No, September 29th. Yes.
September 29th, October 2nd is the deadline.
Correct.
For surveys to be submitted.
Yes. October 2nd, I think, is a Saturday.
Yes.
So that's...
Which is the scavaganza.
Wednesday, I think it is.
What's that?
I think it's Wednesday.
September 29th is a Wednesday. October 2nd, I think, is a Saturday. So that will be the end date for the survey.
Can I just ask one more question about that? Are we also having those surveys at the scavaganza?
Oh, yes.
Yes. Those will be paper.
And the following year too.
The family fair. Yep. Anywhere we can have the paper surveys, we're collecting those. Those are being, is Lisa or someone scanning them over to?
Oh, yes, we are doing it.
Yep. So that's been, those have been accounted for in each of the counts that we get every other week.
The one comment that I would make about venue is I'm hoping that we make a decision in the near future because we have to start the process of publicizing.
Yeah, I wouldn't hold up. I mean, I think like unless you have like a new venue like tomorrow or the next day, it's a bad idea.
I think the sooner we start putting the word out there, the better, you know, the better we have a chance of having a successful.
Yep. So today is the 9th, so we have just about three weeks to get the word out. That's plenty of time. I think we are working on translation already. I think we have people on board for that.
We did. Just confirmed it.
Yep. So now it's just a matter of getting the word out. Okay. Anything else on any of the strategic planning process or anything before we move on to public comment? Nothing? Good. Thank you. Good. We have public to be heard. Thomas Maximer, am I saying? Okay. Can you say it for me? Maxheimer. Okay, I want to say it right. Thomas Maxheimer. Welcome.
Oh, thanks. I didn't really plan on even talking, but I am a candidate for the Assistant Director position. So I just came to see how the meeting was and check out the library. And so, great meeting, everybody.
This is our exciting board meetings.
Good to hear your homework.
Yep. Nice to meet you. Thank you. Marjorie. Marjorie Sax.
So I just am full of appreciation and everything, the hard work that everybody's doing, and also the innovation. I really appreciate the focus on equity and really trying to, in terms of the survey, really reach out to communities to make sure that they're represented in terms of the percentage of population. So just a lot of appreciation for all of you. Thank you.
Lovely. Thank you. Excellent. Anything else? Last call, last call? Good. Then can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anyone really want to stay longer? Good. Meeting adjourned.